Trusty Dodge. Trusty Calendrell. Trusty Healy. Trusty McMillan. Trusty Dade. Trusty Maloney. And everybody else.
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And Trusty Dodge is here, in case you didn't. Trusty Dodge is here, he's on the phone. I don't know this. No problem, we can hear you just fine.
For the way you think about your agreements.
Trusty Calendrell.
I approve the minutes of the board of trustees meeting of May 19th, 2020 to June 1st, 2020.
Any questions, comments, call roll.
Trusty Calendrell. Aye. Trusty Dade. Aye. Trusty Dodge.
Aye.
Trusty Dade. Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
And everybody else.
Aye. Sorry, it's getting doors closed.
Accounts payable from May 19th, 2020 to June 1st, 2020 in the amount of $2,644,097.69.
So move. Second.
Call a roll.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Dade.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Trusty Dade. Trusty Calendrell.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Everybody else.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item A payroll for May 29th, 2020 approval, item B Centennial Park Aquatic Center CPAC stair and landing replacement RFP 2014 award, item C disposal of village equipment online auction public works department ordinance, item D ordinance amending appendices A and B to the salary ordinance number 5503, item E RFP 2017 fencing installation service rejection, item F resolution approving amended emergency operations plan. I'll entertain a motion to approve items A through F of the consent agenda. Moved by Trusty Katsinis, do I have second? Seconded by Trusty Fenton, call a roll.
Trusty Katsinis.
Aye.
Trusty French.
Aye.
Trusty Dade. Trusty Calendrell.
Aye.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Everybody else.
Aye.
The normal spending of the speed fine schedule of the oil park is forward compared to the imposition of fines and penalties recommended ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Healy.
I move to recommend to the village board that pass ordinance number. Jack, do you remember?
5517.
Ordinance number 5517 entitled in ordinance. Entitled in ordinance amending be fine schedule of the oil park bill compared to the imposition of fines and penalties.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Call a roll.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Dade.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Trusty Dade.
Aye.
Trusty Calendrell.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Everybody else.
Aye.
Commande Title 7, Chapter 4, number of class B liquor license.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty McMillan.
Ordinance number 5518. I move to pass ordinance number 5518 entitled in ordinance 90 Title 7, Chapter 4 of the oil park municipal code regarding the applicable number of class B liquor licenses issued by the village of oil park code will count as a law. Second.
Any questions or comments? Call a roll.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Trusty Dade. Trusty Calendrell.
Aye.
Trusty Katsinis.
Aye.
Everybody else.
Aye.
Resolution concerning distribution of care to add funding.
Trusty Katsinis.
I move to pass resolution number 5517.
Resolution number?
2024.
I move to pass resolution number 2024 entitled in resolution concerning the distribution of care to add funding.
Second.
Any questions or comments, I'm sure there will be some comments. Trusty McMillan.
Trusty McMillan.
Speak up a little bit.
Okay. Absolutely, we have to try and right this wrong. Counties with the most cases of COVID-19, the most hospitalizations, and the supposed overtaxing for hospital systems is absurd and not be able to receive any assistance in care to act. Pressures from municipalities seem to work with Illinois directly, and maybe the pressure can work once again with federal legislation.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Healy.
I just want to. I just want to express my dissatisfaction with the elected officials at that level to not really just that give us a good information, no planning, no their overwhelm out of the thing, but this should have been taken care of through the. So I think this is all we can do is pass this resolution, let's do it.
Any other comments? Okay, so I have a few comments here which I'm sure you guys expected. So state officials have routinely called out the federal government for not providing aid to the state of Illinois and/or not providing aid quickly enough. We heard the state was not being provided enough ventilators. However, the federal government provided ventilators and most were never needed. The federal government also built a hospital at McCormick Place, but most of those beds were never needed. The federal government provided funding for expanded unemployment benefits, but the state has failed in processing these benefits, leading to several residents without the aid necessary to meet their basic needs. As noted in the most recent executive order as of last Friday, the governor stated that the federal government has provided over $22 billion in aid in businesses via the PPP program. According to a state senator, the state has received over $3 billion in aid from the federal government, of which approximately $800 million was for aid to local municipalities. Now this was said prior to the legislature meeting. Chicago received aid directly, so they don't get any of those monies. If that money were distributed per capita to the remainder of the state, it would result in approximately $4.8 million for the village of Orland Park. However, the legislators returned to work after over 10 weeks off and passed an irresponsible budget that raised spending by 6.8%, relies on the federal government to provide $6 billion more in funding to balance it, allows a massive increase in salaries for state workers, the majority of whom have not been working, yet getting paid by our residents' tax dollars. They've failed to reduce spending on staff, in fact, they keep staff paid who aren't working, we've had to furlough people. They've reduced, and in this bill, in this budget, they reduced the aid from $800 million to municipalities to $250 million to municipalities, and specifically stopped municipalities from five counties, including Cook and Will, which we're part of, from receiving direct aid. Additionally, Orland Park, its businesses and residents pay over $250 million in sales tax and income related taxes to the state annually. In short, the state has already received several billion dollars in federal aid, but is asking for $6 billion more to balance their budget because they are incapable of cutting spending, and at the same time, they're holding our money that was given to the state to distribute to municipalities. Cook County has taken similar actions. They have kept paying employees who are not working, the courts are closed for the most part, leaving criminals on the street for municipal law enforcement to deal with, which we're seeing right now. Cook County had federal funds distributed them directly, some of which is for municipalities, but they've yet to distribute those funds either. Orland Park residents pay approximately $30 million annually to Cook County. Does the fiscal irresponsibility of these two entities ever end? It is time for both the state and the county to ensure that the aid that was provided by the federal government and has been distributed to them, and it was distributed for municipalities, is given to the municipalities as intended. It is our position that to eliminate politics from this equation, the money should be distributed on a per capita basis across the state. That's what's fair, that's what should be done, and that's what this resolution calls for. Call a roll.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Trusty Dade.
Aye.
Trusty Calendrell.
Aye.
Trusty Dade.
Aye.
Everybody else.
Aye.
Resolution concerning the village of Orland Park's suggested modifications for the store on our path.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty McMillan.
I move to pass resolution number 2025 entitled in resolution concerning the village of Orland Park's suggested modifications to the store on our path.
Second.
Questions and comments? Trusty Calendrell.
I just wanted to say that some of this before this resolution, some of the language are very fresh itself, but I'm prepared to refer to the body, so I think it's a proactive, productive resolution, particularly the last words, pushing the reading where it's desired for the present, for 16, we can use dialogue to state which are consistently moving after it continues, so I think this is correct, staff not threatening, tunnel we like, allowing us also with our other. So productive resolution, supporting some type of, I don't support, but this is your resolution.
Trusty Dodge.
Everybody else, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay or is there that?
We can hear you fine.
All right, thank you. I just want to emphasize that the parts of this resolution that I most expect this for are the reduction from 28 days down to 14 days, which is consistent with the number of other states and died from other agencies, and a clear call out that we still with this virus have a massive challenge nationwide with protecting the most vulnerable, which is those better skaters and those of co-urbanities who could disdain the impact on our near security facilities, so thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty McMillan.
I think this resolution goes right along with the trouble in the state from the beginning. Even though the state doesn't agree, we should be in stage four, very close to it. Time frame, as Trusty Dodge just mentioned, putting the stage is too long. Restaurants should be able to have nine inch service. The regions that they divided, it seems to look like somebody is dividing the districts from the hunger games instead of in Ohio, but we need to protect our most rural population, which we haven't been doing. While we saw the openings of many businesses, some chose to remain closed. Many restaurants that have been given the opportunity to have extended hours, even have chosen to remain closed until they can have that. But that's their choice, and we should respect that. So let's let the businesses have an opportunity to open, and let them make, let them make a choice to do so based on what they're.
Any other comments? So I have a few comments on this, as you know, I've been working very hard to try and get some of these adaptations since the very beginning, put out a, our plan on April 24th, which does look very much like the Restore Illinois Plan except for a few things, and we've asked multiple times with multiple mayors for this, for these changes, and the IML has as well, as Trusty Calendrell pointed out. The first thing that we ask for in this resolution is for the governor to allow indoor seating at restaurants at a reduced capacity. As you know, this board, last meeting, passed an ordinance to allow restaurants to use their outdoor seating to help them add, add capacity upon opening because we knew it would be limited. The governor thankfully followed our lead and allowed restaurants to open with outdoor seating with social distancing, and while this helps, it's not enough because he didn't allow them to open indoors, so they can't open in a fiscally sustainable way. It makes no sense that socially distanced tables outside are okay, but inside are not. We've also asked for the Restore Illinois Plan to be based on the 11 emergency response regions rather than the four current regions. It makes no sense for Orland Park or any other municipalities to have their return to normal based on the events in the city of Chicago. Look at the events of this weekend, same thing. Even the city of Chicago is ignoring the governor's Restore Illinois Plan, and they're using their own timeline and not the timeline of everybody else. Additionally, we are asking for the movement from phase to phase to be based on 14 days rather than 28 days. The CDC, the World Health Organizations, and all expert guidance recommends 14 days. Every other state is using 14 days. We've repeatedly asked the governor to provide us with the rationale and expect guidance and expert guidance he is relying on for the 28 day threshold. To date, he has not provided this. We are also asking for Restore Illinois to provide guidance for our vulnerable populations and our long-term care facilities. We've already talked earlier at the Cow about how 50% of the deaths are in long-term care facilities. The state is absolutely responsible for regulating, which we also talked about at the Cow. This has been a failure of the state to date, and the state does need to fix this going forward. Moreover, to move to the last phase of Restore Illinois, we need to have a vaccine, according to the plan, we need to have a vaccine, which we may never have, a treatment, which we may never have, or eradicate the virus, which most certainly will never happen in our lifetimes since mankind has only eradicated one human virus in history, smallpox. Lastly, and this is where I really have a lot of comments, we have asked the governor to share data and models he is using in his deliberative process. To date, he has refused to do so. A little over a month ago, the governor and his team made several assertions about the lives saved, cases avoided, and hospital usage avoided based upon their modeling. However, based on the facts that they asserted, the case curve they developed made it clear that their facts were grossly misrepresented and indicated a case fatality rate of 26.5%, which is 6.5% higher than the known hospitalization rate at the time, and as we know, is over 100 times higher than the CDC's currently estimated case fatality rate. So the models are, to put it bluntly, they're wrong, not even close. The gubernatorial disaster proclamation of Friday, May 29th makes several statements that don't coincide with the facts that we know. It says, "From the outset, data suggested that older adults and those with serious underlying health conditions are more likely to experience severe and sometimes fatal complications from COVID-19, and emerging evidence has shown that young people, including infants and toddlers, are also at risk of such complications." First, we know the state failed its most vulnerable, and now it's clearly meant to scare people, this is meant to scare people into compliance. Across the entire nation, there are 19 deaths associated with COVID for those under age 14, and over 65,000 deaths for people over age 65. This is clearly targeting our vulnerable elderly populations. The proclamation also states, "The state's modeling shows that its healthcare resource utilization would peak in May, and that healthcare resources would continue to be limited after the peak, and updated modeling shows that the peak may have been delayed with the tail extending several more weeks." The governor is trying to tell us that the peak is delayed past May. This is consistent with his comments of two weeks ago when he said we won't peak until mid-June. However, in the very same document, the following statement is made, this is from the same proclamation. "While hospitalizations have recently stabilized, Illinois is using a significant percentage of hospital beds, ICU beds, and ventilators to treat COVID-10 patients, or COVID-19 patients that require hospitalization, and if cases were to surge higher, the state could face a shortage of one or more of these critical healthcare resources." If and could, it seems that hospitalizations have stabilized, then we have reached our peak. That's from his own document. The document also says, "Of which only 34% of hospital beds and 34% of ICU beds currently are available statewide." Of which only, except, this is what's normally available in the hospital system. We have that available right now, what's normally available on an everyday basis. IDPH's own reported data also indicates that all COVID-19 related resource usage peaked in the last week of April. The models being developed don't even jive with the state's own data, and again, we won't share them. It also states the following, "The state's estimated effective R0, which is the spread rate, was approximately 3.5 at the beginning of the outbreak, but the number has improved to approximately 1.13 based on the state's emergency measures, including most importantly, the stay-at-home order." 1.13, we're very specific, down to the 100s. Additionally, the very same document states, "Some people infected by the virus remain asymptomatic, but nonetheless may spread it to others." And studies suggest that for every confirmed case, there are many more unknown cases. How in the world can the state possibly know what the R0 is when they aren't contact tracing, can't test everybody, acknowledge that there are many asymptomatic cases, and that for every confirmed case, there are many more unknown cases? You can't possibly know that number, yet we are specific in saying 1.13, approximately. I implore the governor to stop, just stop. We, the people, we're not stupid. The models, if they exist, have at best been shown repeatedly to be completely incorrect and not even close to the reality on the ground. At worst, they are fabricated. I would be happy to be proven wrong, please, show us the models and the data that you're using. The citizens of Illinois deserve this transparency after almost three months. In fact, the governor enacted a stay-at-home order, and people were only to go out for essential activities. He closed state parks, and those of us who left our bypasses and parks open were skewered for risking lives. However, this Friday's executive order states the following, under the public health requirement for individuals, item E, go outdoors. Public health guidance suggests that the risk of transmission of COVID-19 is greatly reduced outdoors as opposed to indoors. Where possible, Illinoisans are encouraged to conduct these activities outdoors. Which one is it? The risk transmission are greatly reduced outdoors, or stay at home has saved 30,000 lives? Enough is enough. The First Amendment says, "Congress shall make no laws respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people to peaceably assemble, and to petition the government for redress of grievances." That's the First Amendment, yet from the beginning, the Constitution has been ignored. The free exercise of religion was eliminated. The right of people to assemble was eliminated. Just last week, the Supreme Court thankfully overruled the governor and allowed all religious activities to continue. If you notice, our plan called for that very thing in the, in the very first phase of opening because it's a First Amendment right. I am very hopeful that the governor will reconsider his position on all of these items as requested. These are all reasonable and logical requests. And show us the information that you're using, the people of Illinois deserve that transparency. And otherwise, what's going to happen is what's happened already, it's going to end up in the courts, and nobody wants that. We want to work with you, we want to have a dialogue, but the dialogue hasn't been coming back to us. So we would appreciate if you share the information, share the data, and we can have a dialogue and make these, these changes, which are not that many, but they're important. Call a roll.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Trusty Dade.
Trusty.
Trusty Calendrell. Trusty Dade. Everybody else.
Aye. Motion carries.
Emergency matter. Ordinance closing a curfew in the village of Orland Park.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Fenton.
Pass ordinance number 5549 entitled ordinance closing a curfew in the village of Orland Park.
Second.
So I'll just speak first, so I can give everyone the background of, since I'm the one that declared an emergency yesterday and installed a curfew from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. I think you deserve to know my rationale for doing this and declaring an emergency and doing that. Exercising the mayor's emergency powers, it's not a decision I take lightly. This action was taken to make it easier for our police department to keep people safe and to protect property as well. By keeping it to these hours, it has minimal impact on our businesses since almost all of them are closed by 9 o'clock, or had very little business at that time on a Sunday night. Marcus Theaters, our 24-hour fitness locations, would be the exceptions, but they're currently closed. Additionally, since 9:00 PM is after dark, it has little to no impact on our residents' outdoor recreation activities. Additionally, this was done for one night via my emergency powers because our legislative body has the opportunity to act tonight at its regular board meeting, which we are now doing. This is the way emergency powers were meant to be executed, in a limited fashion, for a limited time, and only until the legislative body reconvenes and decides on the future actions to take. With that, I'll open up for comments. Any comments? None? Trusty Katsinis.
I just want to say anything we can do as an elected board, considering as a trustee, to help our police department keep our businesses, residents, our towns safe. I'm in favor, so thank you, thank you for what you did.
Everybody else.
Trusty Dodge.
I think I heard Trusty Katsinis say this as well, I just want to echo, this is about keeping the people of Orland Park safe. Our highest moral obligation to be deserved is to the people of Orland Park, and I think this is an extraordinary gesture in extraordinary times.
Any other comments? So based on the current environment, it is my recommendation to the board, and this is why it's on here, that we enact these measures for two more nights. The police, this is with, confirms with the police department, so our police department and I both believe that this timeline will be sufficient, given the current events, and if it changes, we'll adjust, but for right now, it's just for the next two nights. Call a roll.
Trusty Fenton.
Aye.
Trusty Katsinis.
Aye.
Trusty Dade.
Aye.
Trusty Calendrell.
Aye.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty McMillan.
Aye.
Everybody else. COVID-19 economic development, business design.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty McMillan.
I mean to approve ordinance 5520 entitled in ordinance amending Article 1 of official municipal code, Chapter 13, economic development advisory board, Section 4, additional uses of economic development loan program funds for the village of Orland Park, COVID-19 program.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Nobody? Trusty McMillan.
COVID-19 has caused state financial inflation, and many businesses are going to fail to overcome this pandemic, and this is the ability to help them survive. I know this takes staff probably some considerable time putting this together, and our residents have been asking for the Orland Park to enter the whole of this, as well. While we're working out, we obviously couldn't have the right answer, so now this is that answer for tonight. Offering different types of businesses, both existing and new, the opportunity to participate in this program will give us just with any impact. Do these programs will help to finalize our economy, drive the revenue once again? So I beg your staff for help.
Any other comments? Trusty Healy.
Mr. Chairman, reviewing this. Ordinance, I think that the, and I was especially pleased with the sales tax sharing for small businesses, 50/50 basis for 90 days, that will directly impact cash flow for the small businesses, which have been, many of them have been devastated, and it's a great incentive. I just have to, I'm curious. Thank you.
Any other comments? So I'm going to speak a little bit, and some of this is just to educate people, since we are on video, they can go to this and understand everything that we've passed here and kind of give a summary. So, well, there were some towns giving people their own money and that they'd have to tax them to recover from. We, you know, we were busy trying to solve some other problems, so we developed a master medical program, we continued to, we continued to advertise for our businesses that were partially open, and we worked really hard to try and get portions of our economy reopened. However, most importantly, since our economy was first shut down, we really have been working on a diligent land, how do we return to normal and recover from this? And we knew that planning for the reopening was much more important than any minor gestures we might make that may feel good, but aren't going to really get the job done. So that's why just last week, you know, in very short order, we approved outdoor seating for restaurants. That's why we approved the use, or we're going to approve, the use of parks and health parks for our health clubs later today, so they can go out and do outdoor classes at our parks. So we're doing that to try and help our businesses. But that's also why we developed this package of incentives that, and they're all for performance. But that's also why we developed this package of incentives that, and they're all performance-based. So to help our existing businesses, we have hotel tax sharing. Hotel demand, as you know, has been devastated, and sharing hotel tax will help our hotels in the next few months. As Trustee Uli pointed out, sales tax sharing for small businesses, so we'll be sharing sales tax for 90 days with any business that is classified as a small business, which will help them in the coming months. Well, it will cost us some revenue, for sure. It will be worth it to help these businesses. To foster development, because one of the things that gets concerning is that developers pull out because they're nervous, or maybe we go to the bottom of the list. Well, we don't want that to happen. We want to make sure people are investing here, and if they have four projects, we would like us to be first. So one, and this kind of extends beyond just the COVID issue, is non-traditional sales tax sharing. What this allows is for sales tax sharing for sales tax generating businesses in industrial areas. To incentivize these businesses, and those might be like an equipment distributor or something like that, to relocate into Orland Park into some of our industrial areas, not necessarily our retail areas, where we have plenty of people attracted to our retail areas. A restaurant sales tax incentive to backfill existing restaurants. As we know, we've had some fairly large and prominent locations vacate recently, and actually, the good news is, rock bottom is coming back, which is different than what was reported previously, so they're going to reopen. But, you know, we've lost Hula Hands, we lost Granite City, we've previously lost Champs. So some of these facilities, we would like to backfill. So to incentivize other restaurants to fill those locations, we are offering a sales tax sharing. Vacant, they give us nothing, and they give us limited property tax as well. So this will get them back on the property tax rolls, and I'd rather share part of the tax than get none. So this is a great idea. New hotel development. We know that currently, we only have one hotel in Orland Park. I know some of you think we have more, but we really only have one. And there's a market need for that. We've heard that over and over and over again. So we're offering this to encourage them to build in Orland Park. So that's why we're doing that. But, you know, also, to encourage projects that may be on hold or delayed due to COVID-19, we are implementing the Orland Park Commercial Impact Program. So for commercial projects that move forward, there will be a 25% reduction on permit and impact fees and a 25% reduction on water tap fees. These incentives will also be tied to a start and a completion date in order to receive, so they can't just get these incentives and then not build the projects. The goal here is to get projects, like, you know, we know that AMC still has six or seven projects they're planning to build, but they're only going to build one first. So if this can help get them over the hump so they build us first, that's great. Same thing with some of our other projects. If they're being delayed or they're one of many, maybe this gets them to build with us. This program is only around for a short period of time, for one year. So they need to take advantage of it now to build, because the goal here is to get these projects that are on hold because of COVID-19 to step up and build. And there will be start dates and completion dates tied to that. And actually, the application needs to be made by September 30th. So this is something that they really need to do quickly. So we're trying to incentivize people again to get back on board. And lastly, to encourage diversification of our economy, we are offering property tax incentives to advanced manufacturing facilities that relocate to Orland Park. That will be particularly helpful for our industrial sites. It will also be helpful for the I-8 corridor. It is important, and I've said this from the beginning, that we view the return to normal as an opportunity. These packages are a great way to help our existing businesses and current projects will also trying to backfill our existing spaces and encourage new businesses to come here. So I applaud the village board for supporting this. I applaud staff for putting this together, and we've been sitting on this for some time. We've been working on this for some time because we've been coming up with these ideas since the start, just waiting for the opportunity when we started to real. Call the roll.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Gethen.
Aye.
Trustee Cullen.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Uli.
Aye.
Trustee Duff.
Aye.
All four citizens, Orders.
Orders please.
5521.
Trustee Gengel.
Orders 5521, how orders on Orland Park, health and fitness businesses utilize those properties to provide fitness classes and clients to restore our morale. Sorry.
Any questions or comments? All I have for this is, staff, when this is approved, please make sure we reach out to all the fitness centers and make sure they know that this is something we're offering them. There's no cost for these permits, and, you know, obviously, just like our field scheduling, we could schedule them for, you know, for three weeks or four weeks every day, whatever time, we could do that at a time. We have an awful lot of parks they can utilize. Call the roll.
Trustee Gengel.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Cullen.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Uli.
Aye.
Trustee Gethen.
Aye.
Trustee Duff.
Aye. Do we have any non-scheduled citizen visitors? Four comments. Trustee Ben.
Glad to be back. I'd also like to remind everybody, as our peak out of this, to need to patronize our small businesses. A lot of them are off. They went to a lot of expense to go out to rent tents and campies and things like that, and they have perfectly good buildings sitting there that unfortunately they can't use, which will force with the resolution, and we're sending Springfield might speed that process up a little bit. But they're out there, they need your help, and even if you don't want to socialize outside and just continue to patronize by doing takeout. I'd also like to remind everybody, yesterday I was inundated by phone calls and text messages about things that were said on social media, mainly Facebook, about things that were happening in the Village of Orland Park. Be very cautious of what you read, because all of the stuff that was on there, most of it was network. So just be careful when you're reading things before you start spreading rumors to all your friends, and, you know, they had fires in Orland Park and things like that. None of that is occurring. On that note, I'd like to comment and congratulate our police department and public works for getting trucks and parks getting trucks, and fire department for the great job that they did yesterday, taking everything, you know, from what could have been a bad situation if anything would have happened. They were ahead of the game and on top of everything, and also the cooperation of all the businesses that just may have opened, and they all closed yesterday. So we're following the curfew. I think it's great that the residents are following along with that, the businesses are too, to know that we're here, and the purpose of the police department is for the life safety of the residents in the Village of Orland Park, and that is their goal, and that's what they did yesterday, that's what they're doing today, they do it all the time, but everything has just been heated up a little bit once again, with social media and just the regular media. So good job to everyone and all the staff that had to come in and help out with all this stuff. Just want to say congratulations. We know we have the best of the best, and that's why the Village of Orland Park is a great place to live. And I just want to say once again, thank you to everybody who did send all their good wishes and prayers, writers, any my little medical concerns, which was shocking to me, but trust me, the COVID thing is a real thing, and it needs to be taken service, and kudos to all those medical professional people that brought the looking. I didn't have that, but I was at Russian, that's where it was. But glad to be back, and I'm sure the mayor is just super excited for that. So I've been very quiet.
Trustee Dodge.
You've already got that. Just a couple of quick things. Number one, glad that Kathy's back, and we choose the people of Orland Park, as things that everyone on this board is, I'm sure that's what we're trying to do, the best that we can, challenging surface agencies for the people of Orland Park, who is, who we are elected to serve. Number three, as we've all learned, democracy is messy, but it's important for us to hopefully speak up when we see things that we need to have changed. Number four, as we've all said, some models are useful, all models are actually wrong. So thank you for that.
Trustee Gengel.
I guess we can, it's good to see Kathy back on the other side. There's a lot of magic first, and we're all together, more first we got.
I think he's glad you're gone, Jim, is what he's pointing out to.
Yeah, great.
But seriously, I'm not going to go with, what the heck are you having with COVID and all that's going on with recent events? I'm not going to give you all those events, but someone said something kind of critic that what you only can do is to level up, knowing control, control a lot of things that are wrong in this whole world, deal with the local level, local police, local health emergency, all that, which allows me to shine about our police department, because the training of officers, quality of our officers, we do at least 20 hours of recent force and reverse training here with our officers. We train them right, so they're good officers, good, make sure they're good when they come in, they're better, and they care, and we hear the stories all the time. So, you know, the point 0001 percent of that effort is the intention of the media, but I think it's one thing to shine, how we truly have a great police department. Now, I accept that, because we pick right, we train right, we have great leadership. So with everything that's going on, the police can control a little small piece of the action, so it's pretty hard on them. So it may be interesting here for kids to learn about the history books, so I guess it's kind of a good part of it.
Trustee Uli.
Yesterday, on Sunday morning, I got up and I was, saw some of the news reports, and I said, this is just incredible. I can't, I don't trust a lot of news reports, so I went downtown to the, to walk down there by myself. I went down there around 7:30 in the morning, it was beautiful, blue sky, everything, but the graffiti, the evidence of theft, the destruction of personal properties, the broken glass still on the windows, I could walk into any Starbucks through the window. It's unbelievable that it was evidence of a breakdown of law and order. It was grim, the statues defacing, the founders of our country, and the hate expressed for the police that are there to enforce law and order. It was grim, and it was, you know, it was disturbing. It was, how, you think we got caught in track of businesses? Think of downtown Chicago, it's going to be impossible. It'd be really difficult to get, I don't know, businesses going out, and employees to go back down there too. In the afternoon, I came by and drove by the mall and all that, and I saw our police in great numbers securing the mall, the businesses. They were here in force, and they turned away a number of these criminals. I just don't realize how great the planning by our police department as opposed to what happened in Chicago, different circumstances, but you just got to thank God that these, that we are blessed with the management and the people executing. I just can't tell you what a fantastic job it is. It's so proud to be in Orland Park where we did not let this law and order break down. I'm one for zero tolerance. Once you start letting people break the rules, let them march on the expressway, let them do this, I don't know, they keep pushing the envelope until there's a complete breakdown. Zero tolerance is easy to say, it takes a strong department to enforce that. I'm not saying it's their judgment, they've been doing a great job without my advice. I hope they continue to do it. Again, to the police department, this public works department that was out helping, the, there are a number of people and the staff here that go behind the scenes, but thank you to Chief McCarthy and to everybody here. I appreciate everything you've done and the effort and the power.
Trustee. Trustee Gethen.
I just want to say thank you to the village staff and the mayor for doing your updates. A lot of good feedback from that to keep the residents informed on what's going on in the community and our recent numbers, so we have a lot of thank yous for that. To echo what everyone else has said about the police department, you drive around town like I did yesterday and today, the amount of police presence in town made you feel safe, made our residents feel safe, drove the people who wanted to create an gap out the way from our town. So from the, so often we want to thank the command staff, which does a great job, but how about those young men and women that are on the street? That's who we should be thanking. So I thank them, and we're very glad to live in a community where you can get funds to support our police department, like we have. So thank you.
Trustee Maloney. Didn't forget you this time.
First, I would say thank you to staff for working out the stuff that's really been helping us, and that our businesses are helping, that we're not having that, and that's one of the most important things we can, because without it, very, we can't continue to supply these mental resources that we've arrived at this weekend. There are several other things, I mean, generally, I have to say, emergency operations are on here today, and, you know, those I noticed, but yesterday is a complete and perfect example of a thoroughness that applied. We have a great set of resources to put it together, and as a result, we're in a dangerous situation with coordination, because not only are our own departments, but other departments, other partners, mutual aid, are as the volunteers, and as if with this first hand, the coordination of those that's in hand, it's absolutely amazing how these people work together to keep our communities safe. And without public works being out there, and without the coordination, you know, I think, I think it would be unsuccessful. So I thank everybody for their hard work and effort, and I know these things are difficult, but I can say this, but it takes the village, and this village came together yesterday and today to keep the health and safety of our residents here, so thanks a lot.
Thank you. So I apologize for the length of these comments, but I'm going to talk about two things. One, I'm going to talk about COVID, and I'm also going to talk about the most recent events. The reason for talking about COVID is not only to explain where we're at, but also to let people know what to expect in the next couple of weeks. So like many of you, and like everyone on this board, we're all frustrated by this COVID situation. What for me is particularly maddening is the lack of transparency and accurate information at the federal and state levels, as well as the complete lack of logic. The CDC says, no masks, then mask, now it's maybe masks. The CDC says, it doesn't spread via contact, then it does, now maybe it doesn't. The state says it isn't getting resources when it actually is. The state says stay at home, now they say go outside. The state says it's making decisions based on data and science, but refuses to share it, and the facts directly contradict the information they give us. The data indicates that our over 60 population is by far the most at risk, but the state ignores our long-term care facilities, which end up being 50% of our best. It's okay to go to Walmart, Costco, Home Depot, Myers, Mariano's, et cetera, but you'll catch COVID if you go to Mirabali Shoes. You can buy shoes at Target, but not at Foot Locker. McDonald's can take cash all day long, but if you pay with cash at a non-essential retail store, you'll catch COVID. You can go to the cannabis store and the liquor store, but you can't go buy workout equipment or go boating. We can have several thousand people a day in Costco, but four people can't play golf at one time. We can eat outside, but we can't eat inside. You can have a tooth removed, but you can't get a haircut. Your dog can get grooming, but you can't. You can be in the hospital for COVID, but you can't get your knee replaced. Makes no sense. Through all of this, we tossed our Constitution right out the window. It's times like these that we need the Constitution, and it's precisely why it was written. Falling back on the Constitution forces us to take a measured approach, which was precisely what was needed, and we did not take a measured approach. At the end of the day, though, people deserve the truth. It's okay to say that you don't know the answer or that you're not sure. I'd rather have that than masks, no masks, maybe masks. Just stop BSing us. Give us the facts and information as best you know it, and let people make their own decisions. It's the government's job to be truthful and give us the best information it can. That's what we've tried to do, at the local level. And tell us if it's an unknown. We can deal with unknowns. Tell us. Don't make it up. That's what we've tried to do here, and we'll continue to do that, because all of Orland Park, for the most part, you've demonstrated that when you're informed, you try to do the right thing. Now that many businesses have opened, I want to reiterate the need for those of you who are over 60, or who are immunocompromised, to stay at home until we fully reopen, hopefully in about a month. COVID-19 remains a significant health threat to those of you that fit these descriptions. I also encourage our long-term care facilities to remain vigilant and follow the procedures you've been following for the last couple of months and improve upon them. I recommend that everyone observe social distancing wherever possible and continue to pay special attention to personal hygiene measures. Also, please disinfect surfaces regularly, like you've been hearing. Doesn't hurt. And it's our efforts to be conscious of spreading this and all viruses that will help make our return to normal more expeditions. It is important to note that the guidance by IDPH for Phase 3 of Restore Illinois Plan are presented as guidelines. Nobody will be an expert in these guidelines, and our businesses will do the best they can to follow these guidelines to the best of their understanding. I know it can and will be confusing for both businesses and individuals. Please be patient. A reminder that the Village of Orland Park has approximately 3,000 businesses, and there is no way that the village, IDPH, or anyone else knows all the intricacies of all of these businesses. Please don't take it upon yourself to play the Restore Illinois Police. Do not call us, and don't ask us to do it either. The village has no legal authority to enforce these guidelines. If you don't like how a particular business is handling the return to normal, simply don't do business with them. Really simple, it's personal choice. It is perfectly within the purview of these businesses, however, to ask you to wear a mask, be on their premises, just like no shirt, no shoes, no service. They have the ability to request you to follow their They have the ability to request you to follow their rules. If you choose not to follow the rules that the businesses establish, then they, I recommend that you just leave the premises. If you don't, that is trespassing, and the village will prosecute violators of that. However, please note the village cannot and will not mandate the wearing of masks. Ultimately, it's up to the businesses to decide if, to make their customers feel comfortable enough to consume their product and to do business with them. It has always made sense for the village, our business and individuals, to prepare for the inevitable return to normal. I realize that currently there are people with strong feelings on the issue of returning to normal. Some of you believe this should have happened in March, while others believe that this is way too soon and we should stay closed for the foreseeable future. I encourage those of you who think that we should have returned to normal weeks ago to be conscious and respectful of others and give them space. I also encourage those of you who think that it is way too soon to be responsible for yourselves and not push your position on others. At the end of the day, nobody is being forced to do anything. Take responsibility for yourself and be respectful of others. The metrics clearly indicate that we should be open and have indicated that for a month. Many other states have started to return to normal and have not seen spikes in cases. We need to learn from that. We are not looking for cases to decrease. I just want to point that out to everybody. But we're watching the data to make sure the cases stay stable as we return to normal, and it's inevitable that we will return to normal at some point. Not only can we keep people safe and return to normal, we have to do that. A well-functioning healthcare system requires a vibrant economy. We all need to be patient and use common sense as we return to normal. The people of America and Orland Park have done a great job throughout all of this. I have no doubt this will continue as we reopen. Now, that's where I was going to end, but then we had this weekend. And I want to talk briefly about the current situation, where we have observed riots, looting, acts of violence, and vandalism being perpetrated throughout the country. Unfortunately, this is not entirely unpredictable. Criminals have been released from the Cook County jails, and criminals have been caught and released on eye bonds and ankle monitors. Add to this state, county, and city leadership that fails to address criminal behaviors and sometimes encourages it. Mix in the fact that we have locked people inside their home for months. Many people, particularly those who struggle economically or socially, have lost their jobs, have had difficulty receiving unemployment, and are struggling to care for their families, and have watched COVID-19 ravage their communities. They are rightfully frustrated. It's completely understandable. Throw in the actions of a bad police officer who has no business being on the job, and you have a cocktail for civil unrest. Well, all of this, when you think of all of this, it makes you understand how these acts came to pass, but it does not excuse lawless behavior. Here in Orland Park, this behavior will not be tolerated, regardless of the underlying reasons. The planning and efforts of our police department and other departments have prevented many incidents. I agree with the chief that a strong presence has been critical to minimizing the problems experienced here in Orland Park. Many pundits and politicians have said the system is broken. Unfortunately, however, they keep blaming the system. The system breaks because of a lack of leadership. Leadership is what matters. It is amazing how great a system is and can be when you have the right leaders in place. I want to give credit to the former mayor and the village board that hired Chief McCarthy 27 years ago. I also want to give the chief credit for the leaders he has developed and hired during his tenure. I also want to give credit to the village boards that I have served with for continuing to give the police department the support that they deserve and for making public safety a high priority. Lastly, but certainly not least, I want to thank all of the men and women of our police department and the other departments that contributed. For your efforts throughout these events in this time have kept us all safe. Thank you for all your hard work. Good night. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Penn.
We can go on executive session for A, approval of minutes, B, appointment, one, compensation, dispossess of numbers, or dismissal of specific village employees, and C, setting a price for sale of leasehold property.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Guy.
Aye.
Trustee Uyghur.
Aye.
Trustee Guy.
Trustee Calandella.
Aye.
Trustee Kevin.
Aye.
Trustee Mulan.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Trustee Gondola.
Here.
Trustee Uyghur.
Here.
Trustee Kevin.
Here.
Trustee Mulan.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee.
Motion to approve the whole and final resignation and release agreement with Windsor Sheriff's, App State Council 31, representing local 368 and the village of Orland Park.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Penn.
Aye.
Trustee Uyghur.
Aye.
Trustee Calandella.
Aye.
Trustee Kevin.
Aye.
Trustee Mulan.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Penn.
Aye.
Trustee Uyghur.
Aye.
Trustee Gondola.
Aye.
Trustee Kevin.
Aye.
Trustee Mulan.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.